Call to order the May meeting of the Simsbury zoning commission. Um, yeah, seven o'clock, so here we go. Let's start with attendance. Are we missing any of our commissioners?
Just Kate.
Kate.
She said she was in Congress, Saturday, and she seems to indicate she's gonna be here.
Let's do this. Kate's not here, so Jackie, how about if you sit next to Kate?
Sure.
And, uh.
Thanks.
I suspect, uh, if, if she does show up, we'll, we'll leave you of your acting duties.
Fair.
Okay, so here we go. The minutes of the meeting of, uh, April twenty first. I hope everybody had a chance to read those, and, uh, I did, and I don't have any suggestions, comments, concerns about those meds, but if anybody else would like to suggest changes, additions, deletions, whatever, speak up.
It just looks like there are a couple of people that are both present and absent.
Yeah, I'm really sorry about that. I noticed that earlier.
Okay, other than that, it looked fine to me.
Is there a correction to be made here?
I think, uh, I think the clerk got it.
Okay, yeah. Oh, so we don't need to make a correction.
No, it needs to be corrected, but the clerk got it.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think Kate and, um, and Josh were both absent and not present.
Good job.
Thanks, Bruce. I think I did good for a minute.
Sorry.
No problem, Kate. Glad you're here.
Okay, um, hearing no suggested changes other than what's already been made. Well, Kate, you just said that.
I'm gonna abstain anyway because I, uh, wasn't here for that meeting.
Oh, okay. So, hearing no suggestions of corrections or changes or whatever, um, let me ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Uh, as amended, there are a couple of changes.
As amended, right.
Yep.
I'll second.
Well, thank you. She needed a sentence. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed, nay.
Abstain.
And those opposed, uh, those abstaining have already been identified.
Okay.
Or maybe, do we just keep whoever's seated for this vote and then switch it out?
Uh, no, he's already done it, so.
Got it, sorry.
One abstention is just fine.
All right, so the next order of business tonight is, uh, a public hearing uh, related to, uh, the application signed off on by, um, our deputy town engineer. It's deputy, right?
Yes.
Adam Kessler. Um, I think, uh, this has, uh, this has to do with an expansion of the Performing Arts Center. George, do you wanna say something?
Yes, if, if you don't mind, um, for the record, we'd like to read the call.
Sure.
Okay, it's, uh, application ZC number twenty-five dash zero five. The town of Simsbury owner Adam Kessler applicant for a special exception in site plan pursuant to section six point three and section twelve of the Simsbury zoning regulations. Construct there an approximately three thousand square foot addition in the floodplain zone at twenty-two Iron Horse Boulevard. Assessors map eight zero nine, block two two six, lot zero zero three A, zone R dash forty.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is a... It is a... Sure what just happened?
We have it on our, uh, tablet, right?
No, but I've got, I've, I've got an audience today. Tighten our game up here. There we go, okay, let's just, nobody move. Uh, it is a special exception in site plan amendment for the construction of just over three thousand square foot addition to the Performing Arts Center band shell. And as, as you'll hear from Adam, it's essentially back of house improvements, office and, and, and space for performers and, and, and workers and office space alike. It's also, uh, so it's a, it's a site plan amendment to the existing site plan. It's also a special exception application. And it's a special exception application because of construction in a mapped flood zone. And, uh, we've got a, a rendering and elevation here. Okay, Adam, you wanna, we're gonna ham and egg this, so.
Okay, so, um, we all know where the Performing Arts Center is off, off Iron Horse, and, um, this, uh, project was envisioned, uh, or accommodated during the parking lot improvements that were done in twenty twenty-two. Um, and that all of our stormwater work, our grading, our curb layout assumed this building addition would eventually happen. And here we are today, ready to make it happen. Um, the proposed expansion will replace the rented trailers that show up each summer. And kinda, as George mentioned, offers a green room, uh, office space, uh, bathrooms. Uh, there'll also be three exterior bathrooms, uh, available for, to the public. You know, outside of shows and whatnot, and, um, we're looking for a construction period sometime, you know, starting after their season this year in October. And hopefully completing the work in May for the grand opening next year.
So we put a, we, this is, this is in your packet information, but just, you don't have to see what I'm showing you here, but, uh, the pink is essentially kind of the bathroom complex for back of house, and that includes both, both, you know, interior bathrooms for, for performers and those kinds of folks, as well as the outdoor bathrooms that Adam was talking about. If you go up to the right, the, the black box is a storage and, and multipurpose area. The big star is the VIP green room. Which there is, and then, uh, the, the purple, the purple area is conference area, office space for pack employees, those kinds of things, so that's, that's the improvement. This was all done in trailers previously.
Yes. And here's a rendering, um, of, of either side. Essentially just expanding off the, the backside of the band shell it is today. Architecture is largely the same, uh, same type of siding, uh, roofing, it all melts together really nicely. Uh, the Performing Arts Center, um, is run by a nonprofit. Uh, they procured the design, which was done by Phase Zero, who's now Colliers Engineering and Architecture. They handed over the design to us, uh, since it's a town facility, and we are managing the bid and construction of the project itself. Um, you know, we're excited to, to put this on the street and get, you know, approval here as well. Uh, 'cause it's a great private partner, uh, public partnership that between the state, there's a grant that was awarded to the town. Um, town funds as well as fundraising by the Performing Arts Center nonprofit group. So, in terms of floodplain impacts, um, with FEMA mapping, uh, it's, it's always fun in this kind of case where you have a generally flat site. And the old mapping is based on old data and not the most accurate topographic information. Um, you know, our new mapping that we hopefully will adopt, you know, next year or the year after, whenever that comes through, is based on, um, very accurate topography. Uh, the old stuff that we had to work off of now, uh, is not. So the blue line you see kind of is a straight line, straight through our existing band shell. And that is, according to FEMA maps, the floodplain as it exists today. So, basically, from the blue line, uh, through the building and towards the river is the floodplain, uh, which is, uh, BFE is elevation one fifty-six. If you apply, um, our survey to that, um, which is field verified topography, one fifty-six follows that red dash line. Largely in the parking lot, you know, riverside of the loading dock area, so essentially on the east side of the building. And then it runs into the existing loading dock and follows the band shell and then off into the fields. And that's your elevation one fifty-six. So that's where the floodplain actually is, based on, um, purely elevations. All of our work for this project is above elevation one fifty-six. The finished floor of the majority of the addition is going to be at stage elevation, which is one fifty-nine point six. The exterior bathrooms, uh, the bathrooms that face the exterior with three, uh, there's three of them, uh, which are located on the west side of the addition. Those are set slightly lower for ADA purposes and to kind of fit in with the, the sidewalks that are there. And that's at elevation one fifty-eight point two. So again, well above the floodplain elevation of one fifty-six. Uh, so the project as a whole, where it's located in our accommodations through the parking lot expand, uh, parking lot improvements, establishes a project with no net fill in the flood zone. Um, we will, uh, survey as built the structure itself and establish that all the thresholds and the building itself is above that elevation, but I think by and large, we'll certainly be able to, to prove that.
Yeah, the, I saw you just put that, the yellow bullet point up just 'cause I think that's the clearest way to say it, is that property's mapped as floodplain and, and flood zone. But when you do the onsite survey, we know what our elevations are. Um, all that stuff is above the base flood elevation, and then they, we, we recommend a condition of approval that the, the town will file a, an elevation certificate to, to, um, to fully prove that, you know, after construction, so.
And who issues that, the elevation certificate?
How much is it?
Who, who issues it?
S- s- so the town will hire a, a, an engineering firm or a surveying firm as part of, as part of the construction, um, letting, right?
Right, so we'll have a surveyor, um, perform that work for us.
What kind of foundation will there be? Is it like a garage-type foundation, a concrete slab?
Right, con- slab on grade and then with standard footings, uh, down below frost for the walls itself on the exterior.
So, we wanna know just a couple of things because, um, you know, this, this got into the process several years ago, and then, and then it was really put on hold, so. So the application was viewed, uh, was reviewed and approved by the Inland Wetlands Commission for a wetlands permit that happened in twenty twenty-two. And that, that permit is still valid. The footprint is the same, it's essentially the same application as it was in twenty twenty-two. The application was also reviewed in twenty twenty-two and recommended, um, for approval by the Design Review Committee in the summer of twenty twenty-two, so. So that, that, that recommendation still exists and is valid. Um, and now we understand funding is now substantially in place, that's why it's moving forward now.
So the only holdup was the lack of founding, funding, that's why it hadn't, hasn't come to the zoning commission yet?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's staff's understanding, yes, yeah.
So I'm curious about the bathrooms. Are there bathrooms in that building now?
Yes, there are.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so this is just, these are additional bathrooms, okay.
They're interior.
No, it, so the important part is that, so they're, they're going to be bathrooms that are now fully open to the public.
Yeah, 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 I got that, that's.
That don't exist today. Those don't exist today.
That's great, kids at the park or whatever.
But I was thinking, was there plumbing and all that? I mean, I guess I've never been inside, but obviously, that's not an issue, so I wasn't sure.
Yes, there is, yeah. Yeah, uh, so one of the things we've, we've been working on, uh, on the town side is confirming that the existing, right now it's, works, uh, the sanitary works off of a little pump station, lift station that's in the, the pavement, and we've confirmed that that's adequately sized for this facility. Um, as if, you know, when we put it in years ago, it was planned, it's great.
Amazing. Okay.
I have a question, just out of curiosity. I mean, the Performing Arts Center is such a gem, and, um, it's an attraction for people to come and watch a concert or whatever. Um, and you may or may not know this answer, but I'm wondering if, if these improvements fall in line with any other venues of the same stature, ever? I don't know what the right word is.
Yes, and from my understanding is that that's been the goal of the, the Performing Arts Center nonprofit, is to, you know, modernize the facility and, and help, you know, one, retain the Hartford Symphony, of course, um, but also attract other, uh, shows and, and maybe diversify what they provide.
We bring back some big name names.
Yeah, just saying.
Now, that's not really appropriate here, but I figured it was better out there.
I like the comment that said, um, you'll have decreased stormwater runoff with this plan?
We did in, as part of the, uh, parking lot renovation, um, that there was, uh, there was accommodations to decrease. We have some infiltration, um, in the parking lot. Um, improvements there, and, you know, the impermeableness of this building addition was accounted for in all those calculations and accommodations.
True.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, so, I mean, I'm looking at the floor plan, so there are three bathrooms accessible to the public, with exterior access.
Right, right, so there'll be, on the west side, on this side of the building, there'll be three, um, bathrooms just accessible to the exterior for the public, and then there are interior bathrooms for staff and for performers.
So how many bathrooms are there now?
Believe, well, right now, I believe there's just one, and, um, in total, we'll have seven.
How do we get to seven?
So we have three facing the outside, um, and then the interior has interior-facing bathrooms for staff and, uh, performers that I think bring up the total of four.
Got it, got it.
Uh, all seven altogether.
So, isn't there like a little shed where they use it for an office for the pack?
Right.
Uh, is that gonna be replaced so they can use this space?
Yes, I believe so. I don't, I don't know what they have planned for that little shed after this is constructed, but, um, yeah, their hope is, you know, to use this more as a area of operations.
It's a good plan.
Yes.
Anybody else? Well, then we're at a public hearing. As members of the public, do you wanna offer any questions or comments on this proposal and what you've heard tonight? If you don't, that's fine, but, pardon me?
I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
I'm just personally curious about the exterior bathrooms. When you say three, is that to accommodate three persons or three rooms? And each room will accommodate multiple people or one?
Three separate bathrooms, one person at a time.
Okay.
But, but they're handicap accessible?
Yes.
So each is fairly good size here.
Will this be available to the public when, um, when there's not an event going on, like through the playground as well?
Yes.
I mean, there is an event going on, would it still necessitate the port of body, just give them the volumes of it?
Yes.
Anything else? Other comments, questions? Anything else you'd like to add? Okay, how about if we, uh, uh, somebody makes a motion, there's a draft motion?
So you need, you need, I'd say you need a motion first to close the public hearing, and then on to your, 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 your standard motion.
Don't we have another thing to talk about here?
No, we, we open this, close this, and then open this and close this.
Do we wanna ask any of the alternates if they have anything to say before we close the public hearing, 'cause then we can't hear from them.
Excuse, Dagny's coming.
I feel like we've heard from her much.
Dagny's, uh, for her thoughts. Jackie, did you wanna say anything?
Well, so, thank you.
Okay, Josh, did you do anything you wanted to add? Yeah? Okay.
So I'll move now we close the public hearing on ZC twenty-five dash zero five.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, I second to close the public hearing. Uh, any further discussion?
Who seconded?
All in favor, say aye, please.
Keep going.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? So, motion is adopted, the public hearing is closed, and, uh, if we don't have anything further to raise in terms of issues or concerns, I'd like to have a motion to approve this. There's a draft motion in, was in the material that was available through the Dropbox. There's also a printed version that's in front of you at your place, um.
So we don't have to read the whole motion, right? Anymore?
Um, you know, I usually like to show it, but, I mean, I, I think it's okay to move the draft motion. And just state what you're, what you're actually doing, it, it's a motion to, to approve the application.
Twenty-five, so I can read it.
All right.
And do the number.
Can Kate want to read it?
No, I just.
Um, I'm going to move that the zoning commission approves, uh, ZC twenty-five dash oh five with the draft motion. Approval is subject to, uh, developing substantial improvements to the plan entitled Simsbury Metaphor Arts Center. Uh, that a special cer- uh, exception certificate be filed with the town clerk, the application provided to the planning department, um, with the elevation certificate prior to the issuance of the accuracy permit. And upon completion of the project, the application shall provide the planning department with an as-built record drawn.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Motion's adopted. So that, uh, thank you, Adam, for your time.
Mr. Vice Chair, you wanna read the, the call for a second?
Sure, aye.
Application, please.
Application, ZC number twenty-five dash zero six of Antonio Five LLC owner, Steven Antonio applicant for a special exception pursuant to section nine point three of the Simsbury zoning regulations for the installation of an additional approximately nine square foot freestanding sign for property located at twelve twenty-five dash twelve sixty-one Hot Meadow Street. Assessors map, I zero five, block four zero three, lot zero one nine, zone B dash two.
Mr. Chairman, I just got a couple slides. Mr. Antonio is here to kind of walk you through what, what the proposal is. So this is, uh, uh, it's not often, we look at this request like this very often, so it's a special exception to add an additional freestanding sign to a, you know, a single parcel of land that has multiple businesses. And, uh, the, the, the reason your zoning regs required is because we have fairly strict regarding how we deal with multiple businesses on a parcel, but we allow one wall sign per use. Again, this is a, a lot that's got at least, at least three uses on it, one, two, three. Four, four. And we really, we only allow, like, the zoning regs only allow one freestanding sign, um, in, in a case where you've got multiple businesses. But it allows the commission to issue a special exception when, in, in your judgment, the, the specified uses, as it relates to the sign requirements, essentially, i- i- is there a need for, for additional signage because of the condition of the property? You know, where the uses are, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so, I, I guess maybe I just defer to the applicant at this point. The only thing I wanted to, to stress is that, um, there are, there are two existing freestanding signs along Hot Meadow. The applicant is proposing uh, to place the sign along Eli Lane. It has, this is a parcel that has two frontages. And so there are no signs out on Eli Lane today, um, but again, I just, you know, that, that property is, maintains the same zoning, it's a, it's a business, a B two zone, so.
So originally I wanted to put a horse on a thirty-foot pedestal. But I dialed it back. So where this all came from, just to give you a little backstory, it's my bad. I'm not saying that the way I did it was right, but years ago, when I first acquired this property, the back lot was always used by Wagner Ford for parking of vehicles. There used to be a body shop back there as well. Um, I continued that. It's sort of defunct land. It creates revenue to pay our Simsbury taxes. And I nailed the sign to a tree, not nailed the sign to the tree, but right in front of the tree that had my phone number and parking is available. Um, I'm trying to correct that, make it more permanent in nature. The nine-square-foot sign sounds a little bigger. What I'm, it's a three-foot square, and it's smaller than the best self-storage sign. When we opened Best Self-Storage, we were enabled to have these form leases and a website, and the customers can now pay by credit card, and it's a lot easier. So we were, we are putting this under the banner of Best Self-Storage. The sign I am proposing is only a one-sided sign. Um, I truthfully do try and make stuff other than Antonio's to be as least obtrusive as possible. With this in mind, I stayed the exception. With this in mind, I am having this, it's more of a directional sign, a wayfinding sign, if you will. It's only going to face Route Ten, so if you're coming down from, um, Hoskins and you took your left onto Eli in that easterly direction, you wouldn't even see this sign because it would be behind the tree. You will only see this sign if you took a left onto Eli, assuming you're going north on Route Ten, and proceeded back, and it shows the driveway. As you can see, the entrance for that parking area is a distance aways from, honestly, that's not the storage use, it's actually to the right, that big lot is the parking area. That's just a, um, they've
Oh, I'm my bad, I apologize.
It's all right, it's irrelevant, but my point is, the parking area.
Go ahead, go back to that. What's that?
The sto- the, so George misplaced the, the square where the, where his storage area is. It's actually here.
Okay. And that's the driveway right there where the sign is? That's where you return to go park there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's why I called it a wayfinding sign.
Uh-huh.
Because it's mostly there for people to find their way to the parking area. And, um, and that's pretty much it. One thing did come up in my discussions with the sign, um, Falcon Sign, who was creating this, creates all our signs, is he suggested I consider some sort of form of solar lighting. There is no power out there, it's in the middle of an island. Um, and the two ideas were either to use those floodlights, perhaps you're familiar with them, they have a little solar panel and they point up to it, uh, or mimic our cap that we have on the best self-storage sign where it would have solar panels on the top, and it would just be a cap approximately five inches wide, two inches high, and would just have one single low voltage that would dimly illuminate the sign. Again, this is not the same scenario as best self-storage where that's our business sign, we want people to take notice. This sign is on a back lot, and it's really just there to help people find it. George, do you have the, um, the picture?
It's in, it's in the application. I have to pull it out, but I, I can do that. The picture of the, of the existing sign.
Of where the sign is, just because it's far away.
The nail to the thing hanging, I can't.
Not nailed to the tree.
Nailed in front of the tree.
Yes.
Got it.
Here, do you have it, or do you want me to just, you can just pass it down? So this is where the sign is. We'd be putting this three-foot circle essentially where the existing sign is. Um, and you can see from its placement, it would actually be, oh, there it is. It would be, uh, three feet forward and one foot to the right, further into the property. And that's the reason you can't see the backside, it wouldn't be worth putting anything on it. And if you're local, you know where it is, not to say.
I never knew it was there.
Seriously?
I see it every day, Steve.
It doesn't affect me, doesn't, I don't feel like it's intentional.
I drive on there, I always can see it. I drive it, and I don't see it.
It has to, like, impact me personally, otherwise I don't hate it.
Well, that's, that's the idea, though, is seriously, other than Antonio's, I try and be in the background.
Sure, we're hearing you. We hear what you're saying.
The only other thing, if, if I, oh, I'm sorry, I was just gonna, just, just on, on Steve's behalf, just, ju- just clarify, um, the addition of a nine-feet sign is still within the, um, the, the maximum signage allowable for the site, so there's not a, uh, it, it, it meets the right, the zoning regulations in terms of total signage that would be permitted.
But it's just that it's freestanding, that's the...
It's just that it's freestanding, that's the kicker, yes.
Okay, so it's not on one of the buildings, so it's not related to the buildings that are there?
The code says it's gotta be screwed to a building. That's actually in our code. So once you get off that, you are a monument sign, but irrelevant of everything else.
It, it has to be a buil- a building? It doesn't count if you nail it to the tree?
Correct.
So we're not promoting your chakwa?
Unless you were a keyboarder, maybe.
I'm just making sure.
And what was, um...
So are we passing around that little...
It's, uh, it was up on the screen, she would, you can't see it, right? She can't see, yeah, she can't see it, yeah, yeah. What, what are, um, DRV's recommendations?
DRV, uh, forwards a positive recommendation as proposed.
Okay.
Well, let me just go back to what we were talking about, the, uh, the square footage of the signage. There's a figure here in the, the staff report, two hundred and thirty-eight square feet is the total square footage today.
Right, two eighty-seven is allowed.
Yeah, right, but you, you have two thirty-eight, right? I just wanna make sure that we're clear. The two thirty-eight is every sign on the property that relates to your businesses, whether they're nailed on the building or it's freestanding or whatever, all in that figure.
Correct, that's the sign package.
Nine more square feet puts you two, two forty-seven, two forty-seven, which is still well below.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Uh, I have a question. You said it's, it's, and this is not eliminated, but you had mentioned verbally that you would try to illuminate it, even if it's more like...
I would like that option, that's why I mentioned it now. Um, it would be, and it can be stipulated as such, or maybe George can come up with some better language. It would be as dim as possible, um, and still show people, you know, where the sign is. As you all know, at four PM in January, it's dark. And that's the time people come and utilize lots such as this, is usually right after work, so they're actually arriving in like five thirty PM, which necessitates some form of illumination. Again, one-sided, not illuminating both sides.
Aye, and, and our, our regs, our, our legs allow, gonna allow for the, you know, the indirect illumination, so that's
Sure.
Just, just to make the...
I would.
Just to meet the meet the meeting zoning regulations would would just be.
I would just say I would like to make sure that we kind of make mention of it in the motions, that we acknowledge that we talked about that. Yeah.
Okay, well, I thought when I looked at this that you were running a business, a parking business, short-term parking, long-term parking. It's a, it doesn't sound like what you're doing.
It it is. It's an ex- so the self-storage blanket, if you will, has the contracts and the ability for payment. A lot of people prefer uh the credit cards. So we're running this as an extension. As you might imagine, best self-storage is a LLC in and of itself. Um it doesn't own the property either next to the old well nor this property. It leases property and then subleases to tenants. It would be the same use here, if that's your question. It would actually be the same tenants. There's no change. I'm very fortunate that we keep the pricing as such. Our tenants are long-term. So I don't see any disruption to what is existing as far as tenancy.
The, so really, the this proposal has nothing to do with the way you do business. It just puts a sign out front.
Correct. And honestly, uh full disclosure, I'm always bad because I do this. Um you can't put a phone number. I don't know if you know that on a sign in Simsbury. There is no uh designation at this point about a Q R code. So what is on the existing sign is a phone number, so you can get ahold of me. By utilizing the sign that we have proposed, it allows the person to pull in, and it's a small Q R, but to get the contact information. So that's also another upgrade, if you will, or not upgrade, because I I shouldn't be putting my phone number out there in the first place. It's another correction. I guess is the way it should be phrased.
How long has the previous sign been there?
Years, several, uh three, four, maybe five.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Well, then again, it's a public hearing. We'd love to hear from you if you, as members of the public, if you have questions or comments that you'd like to make. You have a floor if you're interested. Thank you. Okay. So if there's nothing else at this stage, why don't we close the public hearing? I'll move that we close the public hearing for application ZC twenty five dash zero six.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Uh if there are, is no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye please. And those opposed, say nay. Uh that's approved unanimously, so uh the public hearing is closed.
Aye.
Tonight.
And now uh onto a motion to uh approve the application. If there are no further questions or points of discussion, uh I'd like the motion to.
Um actually, before we discuss, I just, do we want to say something about the lighting? And if so, what do we want to say?
Yes.
I mean, if if the proposed lighting, it has to be within the zoning regs. That's implied by, I mean, whatever lighting has to be, there has to be within zoning regs. I I don't know that you have to specify that, right?
You 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 could simply add lighting shall be permitted consistent with the zoning regulations.
Sure.
And approved by staff or something like that. We all want to come in share care. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So I'm because that we're permitting lighting or are we requiring?
Well, I I think because the application included a statement that the sign wouldn't be illuminated, but now the applicant's indicated there may be a need to do that. I would simply in the affirmative say, you know, lighting, lighting, lighting consistent with the zoning regulations.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Okay, so um. Hold on a second. I move that um the zoning commission approves application ZC number twenty five dash oh six of Antonio's LLC owner, Stephen Antonio, as as amended with with the draft or or do you want?
Um so I so I would say, you know, with the following conditions, um the applicant should admit a uh landscaping plan to staff and lighting can be prom- permitted uh according to the zoning regulations.
Okay.
How about that?
Okay, the approval is subject to the plans stamped received April eleventh, twenty twenty five with the following conditions. Prior to the issuance of the signed permit, the applicant shall submit a landscaping plan to the satisfaction of planning staff.
Yeah.
And?
Any lighting?
Oh, oh, lighting. Ah, gosh. Um um any lighting? Yeah, I don't know, right?
Shall be consistent with the zoning regulations.
Can be added with approval by staff.
You have to say it, Jerry.
Um, okay, lighting should be consistent with um zoning regulations.
Subject to approval by the staff.
Subject to approval by staff.
Somebody's got to second that.
I second that motion.
Jeez, please.
Oh, okay.
Sweating.
Any uh comments, suggestions, discussion? Then we're ready for a vote. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
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 And those opposed, nay. The motion carries. And uh Steve, you're all set. Now.
Just changing.
Hey, did you want to vote?
I'll vote in affirmative for it.
Okay, so it's unanimous, six zero.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, of course.
You're done.
I want to hear George's report.
So I so I um.
There may not be anything here now.
Before um before everybody got here, I I uh I I did inform the
Yeah.
uh the chairman that your 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 last item, the site plan review for the E V charging station uh will be deferred to your to the May nineteenth meeting. There were a number of items identified during the design review boards review of the item such that there's some some items that the applicant needs to to address before coming back. So that will not be heard this evening on the E V charging stations at Simsbury Commons.
I heard you.
Uh so I so under planning director's report, I'm trying to make it a habit of giving you a heads up of applications that have been submitted and that, you know, that will be scheduled for public hearing and and coming down the line. So we will do um we're put putting together the the tech, the staff, or your driven text amendment for the E V charging station parking. That's the lowest of the low-hanging fruit. It's already been written in state code, so we'll have that for you for public hearing on uh June second. But I will, I'll I'll give you the draft for your May nineteenth meeting to review and and give comments on and that kind of stuff.
Does it seem like the proposal that was, the application that was structured is consistent with the upcoming regulation?
Say that one more time?
Is it, does it feel at this stage like the the draft text amendment or assumed to be a draft text amendment is consistent with the state standards?
Yes, yes, yes. It's it's fairly identical to that.
Okay. Good.
Or absolutely identical.
That's better.
Now, we we use a a a I changed some words, but but really. And then uh we we will also have a text amendment on that same date. This is a petition text amendment on behalf of Simsbury Real Estate Holdings LLC, who are the owners of one forty Nod Road, which is the old uh, whatever it is now.
Takamun?
It's a whole bunch of stuff there. Frisbee and Takamun and Collective and that kind of stuff.
Takamun.
So there uh we we've been working with that applicant for some time to kind of get everything that they do on the site and put it in a category and get a site plan approved for it. So this is really the first step to to try to define the uses, bring them to, but 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 um that owner is the applicant. It's not a staff-driven application. So we will um we'll have that for you for public hearing on on June second as well.
I should mention I will not be here until June second.
So that's so 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 that's um. That's for June second.
Thanks, George.
I I indicated that we would give a legal update, just so you know where we are on the Hartford South application. Uh ever uh both sides have filed their briefs. This month, there will be a scheduling meeting uh for uh for a scheduling of arguments over the next three to six months. So that's, I think that's uh, I think for 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 public uh consumption, that's what I have for you.
Got it.
It's moving, but slowly in the system, that's out there. Do you have anything else?
Thank you.
All right.
Is he? Hold on.
Anybody else have anything they wanted to uh to bring up before we close the meeting? Hearing now, how about a motion to close to adjourn the meeting?
I'll I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
And a second.
Second.
Um any other comments on this? All in favor, please say aye. And those opposed, nay.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned at seven forty two.
For over forty years, S C M has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming.
Education.
And live broadcasts.
S C M isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings and celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, S C M faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
S C M receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that S C M remains open.
Continues to educate our youth.
And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to S C M, I've been honing my creative skills, helping to work towards my college degree.
S C M is crucial for keeping our community connected.
S C M isn't just here to broadcast local events. They're actually preserving Simsbury's history.
Join us.
Join us in preserving Simsbury's voice.
Simsbury's voice.
Together we can ensure that S C M continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the Q R code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution.
Counts.
Thank you for supporting Simsbury Community Media.
Where your town.
Your schools.
And your government.
Come together.